We talked about relinquishing five, five minutes to this meeting. Obviously, we need a little bit more time, but you know, I've been on the board for thirty-six years. I've loved every minute of it. I haven't lost my enthusiasm. I've been very involved. And if there's any questions, I mean, right now, I'm running unopposed all the way and voting unopposed, so I would appreciate your vote. It's very important to me, and I love serving on this board. And Rick.
Marilyn, schools do a tremendous job, not only for educating our students, but keeping our community strong. The recent scores that came out, I don't know what the letter grade was. It wasn't an A though for certain people, certain groups of our students who would benefit from additional work.
Well, it wasn't additional. We're talking about the C that was on the report card. I can't explain how your legislators have changed everything. The C is basically, our kids could not go any further. You know, they're in the ninety-nine point three bracket, I believe it is. And it's...
Um, Rick, you're referring to the column that mentioned gifted, and we have a C.
Yeah, that would be the column.
That would be the column. And if you tell us...
And you do a good job with, I mean, the students get credit for the AP classes. They can go and take college courses. How do we get a C?
Well, there's a couple of reasons why we had a C. And if you look at all the other schools, you'll notice, you'll see some schools that you were surprised, they probably had a C or a D. There's several reasons. One, like as Marilyn was saying, the, um, those kids, they're at the top, and the measurements to show they're making an annual progress are a little more difficult. The other technicality, which I really wasn't aware of until this fall, was that the people, students who were included in the gifted program were those who were deemed gifted by the state of Ohio. And those who are deemed gifted by the state of Ohio have to go through a different process, often initiated by the parents and the council. We don't, as the, as the school district, we don't initiate that process with our students because we serve those students that we do. We believe are gifted. But this was part of it, is that measurement was taken with a smaller group than what we would have considered the whole. And I just did that after I stopped.
Then you should legis, you'll speak to the legislature, because they should, they should expand their definition then of how they adjust, because we shouldn't be getting... And I don't say we deserve a C.
Well, do we? The one thing, like so many issues, we, uh, we have to follow the guidelines and the laws from the state of Ohio. We move on from there.
And you know, I, I, sorry to interject, but because I followed this particular issue and I saw that C, also just wanted to point out, that's only grades four through eight that, that applies to, is my understanding. So the AP classes, I have two high school students in there, so you can do extensive AP classes, but that measure doesn't measure that. It only measured students in grades four, three.
It targeted you.
Yeah, so it's like a very...
You're used to this.
Yeah, exactly. It's really my opinion, it's very, it's a very silly mark. I don't...
I don't think you can really judge how good the school system is until you look at the children. Five years, five years out of Solon High School, ten years out, and look at where they are today. Because they're all at home, living in mom's basement. I think they're not wrong, but if they're all out in the world with careers and professionals, then, then the school system is doing well, you know, which is partly, and this, parents doing the right thing.
As, as good as the Solon school system is, and people, other school districts look up to us, Solon, at least this board, has always said, "We won't rest on our laurels." We keep going, and you know, making it better. But I mean, we were very upset about the C and everything, but we, you know, we knew this was happening. We forewarned our parents that this was going to happen. We have tried to change it. We've done everything we can. We help, I mean, we continue to fight this. Sometimes, you know, I say the greatest asset you could have is common sense. Sometimes I wonder with our legislators. The legislators, Marilyn. But you know, legislators think they're educators, and they're not.
I know. We'll have to talk to her. We'll have to come up with one. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you, what do you think of the Common Core for if you look so far?
You know what? I know there's complaints on this, but Solon's been the leader. I mean, we don't have to do anything for Common Core, because we've been there, we've done that. I mean, we're ahead of everybody. They look to us as the model. I mean, I, I wish, again, legislators are not educators, but you know, our governor is part of this, and we've asked people to speak up and say what they feel about this, but we have to follow the rules.
If we don't like it, what, what should we do?
I think you should talk to your governor. I mean, I think you should talk to your legislators. You know, Tom Patton and Marlene Anelski.
Okay.
So, I mean, again, Solon's been the leader. Everybody's followed us. I love being on the board. I love seeing progress. I love the achievements of our children.
Good hands, Marilyn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margot, since you were already standing up, why don't you go ahead?
I love Stan Gordon's banner here, because look what's at the top. Oh, I love it. That's so colorful.
That's where it belongs.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. It was very colorful, I know your background. I want to thank Merrill Mathiya for getting in touch with me and the other council candidates, school board members. You're always a delight to talk to, but I think this is a wonderful night, and I'm glad to be here. And I'm glad that each of you are here, because hopefully you will learn more, in our case, more about the schools and get some of your questions answered. Many of you I know, or actually met over the years, but quickly, my husband Jim and I've lived in Solon for thirty-five years. Our children went through the system, eight, twelve. I began to, and I'm going to say learned about Solon schools, when my oldest child started attending Rockstar Elementary. That's where my beginnings. I became involved, pastored volunteering, PTA. Over the years, I became more involved and started getting involved in district-wide activities, district-wide committees. I've served on every strategic planning committee, except the very first one at the Pine Lake Truck Club, which I think Marilyn was probably the only one in the room who was there. It's twenty, twenty-plus years of strategic planning. I think what's important too, is that when you're involved in the schools, and each of you who are here this evening, you're, you're here because you believe in Solon. In my case, I believe in the schools. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad I can give it myself. And I've done this by helping with levies, bond issue committees, the strategic planning, as I mentioned before. And I've also helped in the city. When I was able to, I helped with the community center and the library issues and, um, the Solon Benevo Club, which I think is wonderful. I was appointed to the board in April of nineteen ninety-seven. I had to run for election then in November of ninety-seven, and I've been on the board now for sixteen and a half years. And this is a commitment that I don't take lightly. I take it very seriously, and I'm delighted that I can do this. I think most of you know, I believe in public education. I believe in Solon schools. Marilyn has alluded to strategic planning, and I mentioned it earlier, is that through strategic planning, we were able to create a vision and a path for where we would like to visualize Solon schools. This all started twenty-plus years ago, is where did we see public education in Solon? And I think most of you who have been about, you know, Solon's gone from a good school system. It was never bad. It was always a good system. But now it is an exceptional school system. It's highly regarded throughout the state and nationally. Other school districts look to us. We are the model. Other school districts come to Solon and study our classes, our classrooms, our curriculum. They want to be us, and I think you should all be really proud of where your school system is, that we have people coming from the outside because they, they want to be us. There are a lot of, you know, details about our achievements. I don't need to review them with you, and you know they've been in a lot of publications also. I think when you look at our achievements, you look at the publications and the articles, you'll see one overwhelming piece, and that is that Solon values, values the student and what I call the three A's. And we value a component of these three A's, which is academics, the arts, and athletics. We pride ourselves that we've been able to continue, particularly with arts and athletics. And you don't have to look very far around to know school districts who have not been able to do that. Part of it is because of all of you. I think when you look at strategic planning, you look at Solon, and I think you can do this also with the city, is we have had a lot of proactive people in our community who are willing to step forward. We've had a stable board of education. We've had a stable administration. We have parents, teachers, staff who are willing to pitch in, who are willing to come part of all this. Our students, most importantly, our community was willing to, willing to embrace and support the schools, which you have done with your tax dollars. I think sometimes, you know, we're all talking about the campaign of hopefully being, going to be elected, and so I, my question is, is you know, I think, what does Margaret do to the board? What, what does she bring to the table? Number one, I'm a veteran board member. I've been on the board for sixteen and a half years. I offer stability. I offer history. I have experience, and I also have a strong background in education from my own working experience, courses. My husband was a career educator. I also offer a willingness to listen to you, to learn from you, and to analyze whatever issue you're going on. And, um, just got a sign. I also believe, I believe in a common sense approach. I've heard that mentioned several times already. I believe in a collaborative approach and finding the common ground. It's not always easy, but you have to work at, and that's where that team concept comes in. I forget who, maybe it was Ed, who said, "There is no I in team." And when you look at your Solon board, there are no egos that are bad. There's no, there's no I. So anyways, I also, I, um, I keep myself updated on all the issues. I promote and participate in the networking with our representatives, Marlene Anelski, Tom Ham, along with our city officials. Thank you. Let me finish my statement, and then I should gladly sit down. But I think it's most important is, I understand the importance of Solon schools. Each of you, it's important to me, and I would, my main goal is to maintain the integrity of school and Solon school, and the value that it gives to our students and gives to our children. Thank you.
Next up, we've got John Heckman, candidate for school board.
Good evening, everybody. I'm proud to be the first one to read from my, my speech here. My name is John Heckman. I was appointed to the board in May of two thousand and twelve. I'd like to be retained by the residents of Solon and Glen Willow for an additional four years. School board member is truly a public servant role. It demands commitment, energy, ability to work with many for the common good of the community. It has been an honor and privilege to serve on this board, and I believe that during the time that I have served, I have shown the passion, the commitment, and great integrity for the responsibility that I was given. I even drove all night from Chicago when we were closing the books in June of two thousand and twelve, because my flight was canceled and the meeting was at eight AM. There were four of us. The only meeting that I have missed was when my nephew passed away July fourth, two thousand and twelve. A little bit about myself personally, I married Selisa, who is here. Our anniversary is this Thursday. We'll be spending, one will be at the football field with the Saturday's program, and the other one will be at the theater. I have a BSBA in accounting from Gannon University. I've been a certified public accountant for twenty-six years. I have an MBA with an emphasis in organizational theory and behavior, not accounting. I have a half a master's in counseling. You might say, "A half a master's in counseling." Well, that's because I was the assistant director of Student Living, which is now the assistant dean of students at Gannon University. And while I was there for those four years professionally, it's a free education, and you can't pass that up. Seven and a half years, I was with KPMG Pete Mawr. It's one of the big four accounting firms now. At that time, it was a big eight. I was an auditor and ended up as a tax manager. I was then ten years with the Center for Families and Children, which is one of the largest social services agencies here in Cleveland. I was their director of fiscal operations and their interim chief financial officer. And currently, I'm with Kirtland Capital Partners. I've been with them for eight and a half years. It's a private equity firm. I was their controller, treasurer, and now vice president of finance. I believe that I have brought some unique qualities to the current board. I have a very strong fiscal background. I was appointed to the finance and audit committee, appointed to the enterprise zone committee, appointed to the capital improvement committee. Because of my educational background, I was appointed as the Ohio School Board Association delegate representing the Solon schools. I follow the budget very closely and make sure that the assumptions that are made in the five-year forecast are conservatively reasonable and that we stay within budget. I work very closely with the treasurer, Tim McCanna. This year in two thousand and thirteen, all the employee contracts here have been settled through two thousand and seventeen. It has been fair for both the employee and the taxpayer. It has to be good for both. Medical costs are well managed, and while I can tell you, we are on top of that horrible care act that they're having problems. You know, the thirty, the thirty hour, we, you know, we have a lot of substitutes, so we, we are on top of that. Another unique item that I bring to the board is that I have children within the district. I have my oldest, who's in seventh grade at the middle school. My youngest is at Orchard. He's in sixth grade. I attend quite a few functions at all the schools and a tremendous amount of contacts from kindergarten through the high school. I've been to all the sporting events. The last one, wow, no, I have to rephrase. I haven't been to volleyball, but I've seen lacrosse this year. Oh, that's because they start four third. So I haven't been able to get there yet. But I've seen lacrosse, and that, that's an amazing sport too. I've been to the theater, choir, band, orchestra events. In fact, I've seen thoroughly modern milli last year three times, and Lengizera four times the year before. The academic events, including the award ceremonies and the science and engineering competitions, you want to see your tax dollars at work, see these kids. I felt that I was still in elementary school. It was totally unbelievable, and I'd like to see what they're doing ten years from now. The PTA events, including the semi-annual budget thing, which is coming up in October. Already.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a second page.
I know.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll finish.
Must be having fun.
I'll finish. Right here. This, you know, I, I've been on the strategic plan back in two thousand and ten. I co-chaired the finance committee meeting. This has been a progression for me to where I am today, and I've continued to produce for the citizens of Solon and Glenwell. I would like to continue to represent everyone in Solon and Glenwell on the Solon school board. Thank you.
Challenge the school system, how would you build it?
Well, right now, this is, this is my opinion, I believe that the superintendent will be soon. And so strategically, throughout the years, since I was back in two thousand and ten, and watching, putting people in place, and then with these contracts that we have now put in, put in place, because the next superintendent, he or she, you know, doesn't have to worry about some of these things. So I think that's our, our next biggest. You know, obviously, you always have the fiscal issue. You, you never know what's going to happen in Columbus, no matter who's in charge. That's totally irrelevant. You just, they have to put more money towards the schools. And I'd like to answer your question about Common Core, you know, because I was at a meeting, and I mentioned about my youngest is in sixth grade, okay, and, and my other boy was just in sixth grade. And what they're doing now is totally different. They kind of started in sixth grade, and it's very much more in-depth. In fact, the teachers are qualified to teach everything, okay? But now, we'll say, "You're teaching math only. You're teaching literacy, and you're teaching science and, um, science and social studies." And then, when you teach each project or each class, you're teaching it for four straight weeks, so you're not going back and forth. They're really getting into depth, you know, at least, you know, this is from an educational standpoint. You know, from a government standpoint, that could be a totally different thing. But right now, I mean, when we watch, we have committees in the schools that, under our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Siegel, who's very thorough, and I believe, Mr. Morrow, you are on the, the committee, and it's reviewed. All the literature books are reviewed, so it's not like, you know, math is math, you know, literacy can get into something else.
Who repeats, there's a group that reviews?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a group of teachers that review with them, and then it comes to the, at the board level. There's two members of the board, which I have not been on that committee yet, but we review them all. Oh, absolutely. Yes?
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should, back here. Sorry.
This is all, a question for you, because you're the newest member, but really anyone else can chime in. Years ago, when my son started in school, you know, once a while, I'd watch the board meetings on the channel, and they were the most boring things I've ever seen. But the thing that almost kind of bothered me is that it sounded like everything had been decided before the meeting. Nobody ever disagreed. Nobody ever voted against each other. It seems like you just all took turns being the president. It's almost a little too comfortable, from my point of view. You know, I had so many of you being there with such longevity. And I'm just kind of curious, as being a new member, have anybody ever disagreed with each other?
Oh, well, the answer, in my notes, we're about to... That answer is yes. You know, the neat, the very unique thing about Mr. Reggano, he's very transparent. You know, you, anyone here can go see him. I think he's even been here. We get weekly stacks of paper of what's going on. And for example, you know, we don't meet behind those orgs, and that's not a lot, okay? But for, there was one project that they wanted to spend money on, and I called Joe and Monty, and I said, "Joe, I have to tell you the truth. This is too much money. I, I won't be supporting this." You know, and that's, you know, was my opinion. And, and so therefore, then, for some reason, it never showed up on the agenda.
Isn't that amazing?
Well, I mean, but, but, but that's important. Sometimes I think, you know, I, I'm not afraid of vote now, and I don't think anyone else is afraid of vote now.
Like I said, has any people ever voted?
Oh, I don't know, because I've only did. Well, you put that on there, I don't know.
You know, I understand what you're saying, but I also understand, I have seen board boards that don't get the information before. It's all their primary letter, and we review it all weekend. It's, we have a lot of homework to do, and we have a lot of questions that I will call Mr. Reggano and ask if I don't get a clarification. It's taken off the agenda. But you know, something we're doing right, because I know that boards do argue at, at meetings, and I know that sometimes the system isn't successful, and sometimes when board members do this, it's generally because they're, they have a personal interest in something else. This board has been great about not writing their personal feelings, just, and I think it runs smooth, you're getting something that is leadership in Solon. It's not only that we're competing with schools from this area, which we've always had in the state of Ohio, but as my son says to me, he's prepared, he works for a German corporation, and because of the Solon school system, he is prepared. It is worldwide now, and I think we're doing something right. No behind, it's all because we did the primary letter and review it for the weekend. And have any questions? That, that's what usually is the case.
All right. Thank you very much.
So I get to say, "You're there."
We're done right now. Thanks.
And you guys, happy story. We are wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. For those who don't know me, I'm Bob Falsen. Peggy, my wife Peggy and I have worked in Solon for going on thirty years. I have an undergraduate degree from Miami University, a master's from Ohio University. Well, I'm the butt guy. We have, we have two daughters, Suzanne and Katie. Both Solon High School graduates. Peggy and I were very, very involved in their activities when they were in school. Both now are teachers with master's degrees. Suzanne is a guidance counselor in Aurora, and Katie is a vocal music teacher in the middle school down in Marysville. I have been a supporter of the Solon schools for going on thirty years. We have a strong school system. I have been a member of strategic planning committee, both finance and facilities, as recently as two thousand and eleven. I supported the Solon schools strongly as mayor from nineteen eighty-seven to ninety-seven. I can say probably no mayor, pastor, president, had the dialogue, the open dialogue and the communication I had with the superintendent, Joe Reggano, when I was mayor. We worked in partnership to move our city forward. I've also worked on numerous levy committees. I was out there just a few years ago pounding signs in people's front yards for the levies. In two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven, I ran two very congenial campaigns for the school board. On the morning of the vote in two thousand and seven, I woke up to find the three incumbents I was running against had formed an election in Salt Lake. There were signs all over the city till Levin, Cybert, and Gabby. I lost that election by ten votes in a recount. That, that hurt. I was the first runner-up in the two thousand and eleven election out of a field of seven. This time, I'm going to upset the apple cart just a little bit, fully recognizing that we have a good school system. Here's where I differ from the current board on philosophy. When I interviewed for vacancies in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven, Dorothy, or, first, Linda Wise moved, and Dorothy Cybert moved, the same question I got both years was, "How do I feel about consensus?" I believe in consensus. I believe in trying to talk things out and trying to reach an agreement. But I also, very differently than probably the philosophy of the board over the last twenty years, is I don't believe in taking one for the team if I don't believe that it's right for the community and the school system. And I won't do that. I remember John Court, back, the late great John Court, back toward the end of his tenure as a school board president. They asked him if he recalled a non-ananous vote. He said, "Well, I think we had one back in the mid-eights." I don't think any vote needs to be unanimous. I think some dissent and some open discussion on the floor, in public, is very, very good. I think we need to get tougher with our state, our state, our state legislators, even Republicans, Anelski and Patton. We talk nice to them, but every time we look up, we're either getting cut, cut back in taxes, in aid, in tangible personal property, or we have a situation, "Well, we came onto this okay. We didn't get cut as much as we thought we were going to." This state has been in violation of the school funding that the Supreme Court has found in violation twenty years ago, that it was unconstitutional. If we were found in contempt that long, we'd be going out of here in handcuffs. But yet, they don't fix the problem, because they deal with short-term solutions there. Unless we get tough with these people, folks, their attitude is, "We're going to cut our taxes in Columbus, but we're going to, you have to raise your taxes to maintain quality on the local level." And that's wrong. So again, the difference with me is I'm going to ask good questions in an open forum. I believe in consensus, but not all the time if I don't think it's the right thing to do. And folks, Google Medina City Schools Superintendent. Go home and Google that. Now, I am not at all inferring, because we have a former treasurer here, Danny Anderson, in schools, that what went on in Medina ever happened in Solon. But when you have the philosophy that you're going to operate out of the public view, behind the scenes, look what happened in Medina. You've got three board members that resigned. You had recalls. You had lawsuits against the superintendent. The superintendent is through the school system. Because of sweetheart deals and financial arrangements they made, that that good school system, the people that have the school system, did not know what was going on. I am not at all inferring this is happening here in Solon now, but if you continue that philosophy, this board's not always going to be here, and this superintendent's not going to be here. But that philosophy is going to get you in trouble. So folks, that's the difference between Bob Falsen and the rest of the school board members in his campaign. Thank you.
Are you just saying there's a go-along-to-get-along philosophy?
Well, there, there again, you've heard the board members say it. You know, they, they liked that consensus, and they liked that team vote. You know, they liked that consensus and they liked that team vote. I did, too. I was mayor of the city. I got along with the city council very well. You can't fight. You can't fight all the time. But there were times on council, there were people didn't agree with, but I did. I didn't agree with, they did. We had open discussions. We talked about this. I think that's healthy. I think it's a healthier philosophy.
I've known each other a very long time, and I believe we have a great deal of respect for each other. Our kids have been together. They were at show parties, men and I, standing in the rain. Two activities and so forth. I have to address some of the issues that have been brought up. Marilyn mentioned we receive our Friday packages. One of the reasons some of the things cannot be discussed as a group is because of the sunshine policies. So we get our information. We review it. We then call Joe. His, part of his job is to keep the board informed. Part of our job is to keep him informed of community feelings about certain subjects that might come up. This is not an easy thing. John mentioned that one particular, it was an expenditure that was being considered in capital improvements. But John was not the only person who called. There were three of us who called and said, "Not sure we can go with this." That's part of the Friday letter, is get the information you can expand. I don't think the citizens of Solon want to see their school board sitting on television fighting over some, some issue. We like to get the issues, hear them, get them in front of us, deal with them. Bob mentioned the diamond. There are several districts that are strong still. They had a lot of problems. It's on the front page of the newspapers. Do you want to be on the front page of the newspapers? We don't. If we have an issue in our system, we get the fan, we deal with it quickly. Our administrators are charged with this, they know it. Your board does not sit up with these things. You should hear some of the phone calls that take place when there's some situation in the school. But it gets to you here, and that's what's important. All of my decisions are...
Well, that's what I'm worried because of the way you're approaching this thing, because I think the issue from the public is, if in fact the superintendent wants to do something that you disagree with, I think the public needs to know you have the ball to tell him no publicly, not behind the scenes.
We could, uh, we could do that, but that's part of our strategic planning process, too.
I'm sorry, but it's not part of open government.
It's part of the planning.
If you can counter that, please jump in again. And, and, you know, these honorable people, these people I have talked along with for a long, long time. I mean, I've only met John Heckman in my last year. But we had a great relationship. We were both representatives of Solon. But you heard them say tonight that on Friday or over the weekend, any issue has hair on it. It doesn't see the light of day the following week, or in a agenda, on board meetings. I'd rather discuss this in public because the problem right now is people don't really have enough time to pay attention as it is, and if you're doing it out of sight of the public, they even know less than the informed public makes better decisions at the polls and for levies and, and everything. So I just think it's a better way to do business. And, and I don't believe in fighting. I'm not going to fight. Probably most of our decisions on the board will be unanimous.
Well, that matters that I want to cut off a kind of discussion here right now. But our...